The Senate made some changes in a variety of things, including the funding allocation that the Euclid City School District would get. It's now got to go to the House to see if the House supports those changes. It is unlikely that they will adopt all the changes, and at that point, the bill will then go to a conference committee made up of members of both legislative bodies. They'll work out the final changes, and then it'll go to Governor Kasich for his signature and/or veto. This morning, I actually met with Senator Nina Turner, former Representative Kenny Uco, and the three of us were at the Northeast Ohio Office of the Ohio Educational Association, and we were talking about a variety of legislative issues, including the budget. And I want to read from Senator Turner. Senator Turner released a statement Thursday. I believe that would have been, let me just do some math, June 6th. It would have been June 6th. Forgive me. Okay. And she wrote the following. "In hearings on the budget in the Finance Subcommittee and Full Finance Committee, we heard one reoccurring theme from teachers, superintendents, students, and community members: the underinvestment in Ohio's educational systems. Roughly $1.8 billion was cut from K-12 education in Governor Kasich's last budget. Funding for Ohio public colleges and universities is below that of funding levels in 1997. We know that the single greatest investment that we as a state can make is in the education of our children. There is no better job creator or retainer, no better way to grow our population and provide more opportunities to Ohio residents than providing them with a high-quality education. We need to drive resources to where they are needed most." So, I would agree with Senator Turner's statement, which is why I wanted to read it into the Euclid School Board record. And again, the process has yet to completely unfold. The up-to-the-minute discussion as to how much money the Euclid City School District would get in the current version is not as much as Governor Kasich initially proposed, but better than what the House Republicans then cut us to. So, we will wait and see. Again, the process is still unfolding, and we will keep the community aware as to, you know, how much money we can count on from Columbus as we move forward in the budget process. Again, by law, it's got to be wrapped up by June 30th. So, you know, if nothing else, by the first meeting in July, we should have some solid numbers that we could report back to the community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And do we have a legislative license report? Mrs. DeAngelis?
Student.
Student, sorry.
Yes, we do. Schools out this week, so we're wrapping up a lot of activities here. The Early Learning Center will host a preschool open house at the Euclid Public Library next Monday, June 17th, at 1:00 p.m. Arbor Elementary School. The 4th and 5th Grade Dancing Geometry Program performed a culminating event on May 31st for parents and students. Mrs. -- I just hope I say this right. Katikowski's 3rd graders held a living wax museum in...
Quikowski.
Quikowski. I'm sorry. 3rd graders held a living wax museum in their classroom, where their Arbor peers, family, and friends came to hear about the historical figures they were exhibiting. Bluestone Elementary School. The Bluestone Living Wax Museum was incredible. Students did an excellent job of portraying their historical figures while making eye contact with museum visitors. 4th graders from Bluestone went fishing with Powell. Chardon Hills Elementary School hosted a VIP day last week, where very special people got to visit Chardon Hills. Chardon Hills students took the field at the Lake County Captains' game on May 30th as players ran onto the field. Shoreview Elementary School. Shoreview students had been donating their chips and snack money to help the victims. Mrs. Mas's generosity in her class, they were able to collect $320. Students led our daily pledges this week. The students and staff say the Pledge of Allegiance each day, the Shoreview pledge, and our Anti-Bullying pledge every morning. Central Middle School. The YES Program, which stands for Young Euclid Scholars, took a trip to the University of Akron on May 29th, and new members were inducted into the program on May 30th. Forest Park Middle School won the Fuel Up to Play 60 Spring Challenge and will be going to have a field day at the Brown Stadium. Euclid High School seniors celebrated their last day of school at Dave and Buster's on May 30th. Students from Mrs. Misra's Spanish class took a zumba class in the varsity gym. Mr. Gurski and Logan, who's a student at Euclid High School, took the field because Logan got to throw out the first pitch at the Captains' game. It was Logan's 16th birthday. The rest of his peers in the MH program enjoyed the game as well. EHS held their prom last Thursday, May 6th, at La Mafa. Graduation was held yesterday down at the Wolfstein Center. And students' last day in Euclid schools is this Thursday, June 13th. Have a nice, happy summer.
Thank you. At this point, we will have visitors' comments relative only to agenda items, and please remember the two items that were pulled: the security services and, obviously, executive session. So, are there any public comments at this time? You need to come up to the podium. Seeing none, we'll move on then. We have some recognitions. Mr. Bell?
Yes. We move to him. (pause) Madam Chair, members of the board, and to the community, I've got four resolutions that I want to share with you this evening, beginning with the first one, which involves our dancing classroom. So, I just want to give you the -- I'm going to read the resolution to you, and then what will happen? The board will then vote to accept the resolution, and then after I read the resolution, then what I'll do is invite the students up to be recognized. Whereas the mission of Dancing Classroom of Northeast Ohio is to build social awareness and confidence and self-esteem in children throughout the practice of social dance, whereas Dancing Classroom is not about dancing, but it's about a tool for getting the children to break down social barriers, learn about honor and respect, how to treat each other carefully, improve self-confidence, communicate and cooperate and accept others even if they are different. And whereas 5th grade students at Shoreview Elementary participated in the program, worked during their lunch in free time, and competed and competed against nine other teams throughout Northeast Ohio, making it to the final competition. And whereas the students, following -- the students won the silver -- won a silver medal at the Colors of Rainbow Grand Final Competition at the Ohio Theater in the Playhouse Square, now therefore be resolved that the Euclid Board of Education extends congratulations to these students, which have brought recognition to themselves into the city of Euclid School District. And Madam Chair, members of the board, I accept this resolution, and I would like to give that to the board for a vote.
Thank you. No motion?
So, who?
By Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Carriese, 5-0.
Thank you. Now, what I'd like to do is I'm going to read, and if students are here, I'd like for them to come to the front. The first is Jada Francis.[563.25][563.25](applause) The students will all be receiving a certificate. Isaiah Ratliff.[577.12][577.12](applause) Isaiah, I bet you can dance too, huh?[586.54][586.54](laughter) I like that vest too, Jeremy. You look good. Jordan Green.[635.75][635.75](applause) Again, all of these students were recognized, Dancing Classroom, they were Northeast Ohio competition winners. Just give all of them a round of applause.[701.29][701.29](applause) I want each of you -- I just want just each of you to know that, Superintendent, I'm very proud of you, and the Euclid Board of Education and the city of Euclid, very, very proud of each of you. So, you should be proud of your accomplishments. Congratulations.[720.12][720.12](applause) And my board president has reminded me that I need to acknowledge the parents of these individuals. So, would you all please stand?[731.93][731.93](applause) And I just want to share my congratulations to you, because I know it begins at home. So, thank you for what you've done. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
And they all know how to do their bows, so go ahead and bow for us.[750.66][750.66](applause)
The second resolution that I'll be reading to you is some students, high school students that we're going to recognize. And again, I'll read the resolution, the vote on the resolution. If the students are here, then I'll have them come up. Whereas the Business and Professional -- Business Professionals of America held a national competition in Orlando, Florida, in the area of Cisco Systems Administration, where students demonstrate knowledge of Cisco networking commands and devices, as well as general knowledge of networking terms, concepts, and troubleshooting. And whereas students from Euclid Cisco Systems Association placed at the state level participated in the national competition. And whereas Alan Hudak placed in the Systems Administration using Cisco competition, a two-day event which participants had to qualify the first day to advance to the finals, and third place went to Brianna Cunningham, the first female from Ohio to place in the event at the national level. And whereas Bob Kurroyd placed fourth in computer network technology, a competition and a test of network certification. In the process, earned a Microsoft Technology Associate Certification. And whereas, this marks the third time in the last five years that we've had students from Euclid schools in the Tech Prep Cisco Program that won national, been a part of the national competition, and placed within the top 10. Now therefore, the Euclid Board of Education extends congratulations to these students for their advancement, and also to Mr. Roy Pignotello, the Cisco instructor, who has brought honor to them and to our school district. Madam Chair, members of the board, I give you this resolution for a vote.
Okay. And note that Alan Hudak finished first.
Yes.
Dissemination. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Lysy, second. By Mr. Smith. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mr. Carriese, 5-0.
Thank you. So, I'd like those students, Alan Hudak, who was first in the nation, if they're here, Brianna Cunningham, Bob Kurroyd.[910.32][910.32](applause) And with Mr. Pignotello is here. Come on up.[926.12][926.12](applause)
Unfortunately, we didn't get to make the presentation at the conference. So, I did want to present.
I did want to present their awards to them in a public setting, so that they could, you know, display their medal and display their awards. Alan did get first place in the competition. He was in first place at the end of the first day, and first place at the end of the second day. He had the highest score on the -- the second day is a simulation program and a lot of troubleshooting. He had the highest score on that as well, as well as the multiple choice test. And another first for Alan, it was his first airplane ride.[979.00][979.00](laughter) And as Dr. Bell already alluded to, Brianna could not be here tonight, and she actually -- it was the first time we ever had two Euclid students, you know, we have won it. First time we had any two Euclid students in the top three at the same event. And had she checked her cable, she would have gotten second place in the event. So, I want to make sure that, you know, she knows that as well. But she was also -- there was only three people that scored a 90% on the second day, and that's really the true test, because in the simulation and the troubleshooting, you can't -- it's not about what you know. I mean, you have to demonstrate what you know as well. And she actually jumped from sixth place all the way up to third place, and had she checked her cable, it would have gone to second place.[1033.54][1033.54](laughter) So, and then with Bob, Bob was in the competition that Bob was in, and one nice thing with his competition is he also obtained a certification, a Microsoft Technology Associate Certification, which was part of his score. And, you know, when you get to the state level, one question, one way or the other, can sometimes decide whether you're, you know, up on the podium or, you know, in that top 10 group, which is what we can always shoot for. So, I'm proud of all three of these guys, and it's just been a pleasure to have them in class. And both of these guys are going to Ohio University next year, and are going to continue in networking.[1074.33][1074.33](applause)
What does a certification mean?
The Cisco certification is -- it's an industry certification that people will obtain in the real world to prove their expertise at networking. And it's really what makes the, you know, all the stuff behind the scenes that makes the Internet work. And it's very rigorous and quite intense. And, you know, the test itself, or the certification, has like a 50% failure rate. So, the fact that these guys are able to compete at this level, and they're both going to be doing their certification test, really speaks a lot for being, you know, a teenager and having that kind of certification. And, but basically, it's about everything that makes the Internet work. It's why, when you sit at home and you click on that mouse, why that, you know, video shows up and how it gets there. So, what I always tell everybody is that, you know, we're not about all the whistles and media and all that. We're not about the video. We're about making the lights blink green to get all that stuff to you. So, that's basically what it is. It's about making lights blink green. I also like the thing, because the School Board has always been very supportive of all the career tech programs, and, you know, it's a great opportunity for students to get this kind of exposure to, especially here at Euclid. We have so many great career tech programs that give these kids such a great head start. And the support that the School Board has given us, and also the support that Dr. Smilak has given us, that allows us to go to a lot of these competitions, has just been, you know, outstanding. And we wouldn't be able to achieve what we do, you know, without that kind of support and that kind of leadership.
Thank you, and I didn't even pay you for that applause.[1192.08][1192.08](laughter)[1193.08][1193.08](applause)
We also want to acknowledge the parents, so if you would please stand.[1203.83][1203.83](applause) We would like to say also congratulations to all of you. I know, it's like a bad person's smile. I know, I know. See, what happens with high school, they graduated yesterday, so I'm lucky to even have them here. So, I get that. I understand. I just want to let you know how proud we are of you. And I've always wondered who I should blame if the Internet goes down, so now I got it.[1231.15][1231.15](laughter) So, congratulations again. We're very, very proud of both of you.[1234.15][1234.15](applause) Okay, and the resolutions keep on rolling. This is number three, and this resolution, Madam Chair, members of the board, was master teacher is defined as one who demonstrates excellence inside and outside of the classroom through consistent leadership and focused collaboration to maximize student learning and strives for distinguished teaching and continued professional growth as specified by the Ohio Standards for Teaching, for the teaching profession. And whereas to be eligible, a teacher must hold a professional teaching license, certificate, and have taught at least seven years, work a maximum of 120 days during the school year, and work under a teaching contract. And whereas a district-level committee comprised of administrators and teachers assists with the confirmation of eligibility and scoring of applications. And now therefore, let it be resolved that the members of, to the members of the Board of Education extend congratulations to the following master teachers, whose commitment has brought honor to themselves and the district. Madam Chair, members of the board, I give you this resolution for a vote.
Thank you. No more questions?
So, who?
Smith, second. By Mrs. Sudar. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mr. Carriese, 5-0.
We have two master teachers, one that is with us today. The first one is Donovan Pujakcy, is not here, I can see, but we do have Yvette McLean. So, Yvette, would you come on up, please?[1343.65][1343.65](applause) Yeah, and I just want to, you know, because I got embarrassed like I did everybody else. So, I just want you to know how proud we are, how proud I am of you, Superintendent, and what you do for our children in this district, and we really appreciate that. This is no small accomplishment. As you listen to what we read, this is something that is reflective of someone who's put a lot of time in, a lot of effort, and I just want you to know, on behalf of the School Board and on behalf of the school district, how much we appreciate your efforts. So, congratulations on this honor.
Thank you.[1389.33][1389.33](applause) The school and grade level, who do you teach?
I currently teach 8th grade at Central Middle School. This is my ninth year teaching.
What subject?
Sorry. Actually, I had Bob was one of my students, so.[1408.76][1408.76](laughter)
You got it, it's fine.
And Brianna. Brianna was one of our students, too, so I'm happy.
Good.
Not bad.
Thank you.[1418.65][1418.65](applause)
Okay, the last resolution that I have is to give to the board and to the president. Whereas the Euclid Board of Education has accepted the resignations for the purpose of retirement from 12 certificated staff members and one administrator. And whereas the board wishes to recognize these individuals and express appreciation to them for the years of loyalty and service to the Euclid City Schools, now therefore be resolved that the Euclid Board of Education wishes to extend our best wishes to the following individuals that we'll call up here in just a second after we have made the vote. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, I give you this resolution for a vote.
And is there a motion? So, who? By Mrs. Lysy, second.
Second.
Mrs. Sudar. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Carriese, 5-0.
Your order is different than mine. Oh, okay. Go ahead, I'll figure it out.
Okay. We'll work together. What I want to do is I'm going to read the little bit, a little bio on each of the individuals, and then staying with the embarrassment mode, I'm going to have them all stay up here, and then we'll have them all together, and we will applaud them individually, but we'll also applaud them together, because this is a significant accomplishment. The first individual I'd like to invite up is Sandra Ball.[1525.83][1525.83](applause) Sandra's looking at me like, you know, be easy on me. So, I will. Sandra was hired in 1985 and has taught special education grades one and two, grades one and two at Upson, Lincoln, Roosevelt, and Chardon Hills Elementary School. Sandra Ball.[1555.33][1555.33](applause) The next individual is Patricia Casano. Patricia has been a literary coach, but she began her teaching, she began her teaching as a 1st grade teacher at Thomas Jefferson in 1985. She also served as a 2nd and 3rd grade teacher in the district at Upson Elementary, and prior to that, a car position as a literary coach. The third teacher I'd like to bring up is Lauren Law Green.[1605.83][1605.83](applause) Laura began her teaching career as a home economics teacher at Euclid High School. While at Euclid, Laura has taught on all levels, including as an English teacher at Central Middle School, and several elementary teaching positions. Laura Green.[1638.23][1638.23](applause) Ingrid began her teaching as a German teacher back in 1978 at Central Middle School. She served exclusively as a German teacher until 2010, when her duties were expanded to include all art courses. Ingrid Koenig.[1674.97][1674.97](applause) John has been a teacher with Euclid City Schools, and John has taught at five elementary schools that include Memorial Park as a 5th grade teacher, Noble Elementary as a 4th grade teacher, Upson Elementary Teacher as a special education teacher, Thomas Jefferson Magnet School as a 4th grade teacher, and his most current position is a 1st grade teacher at Chardon Hills Elementary School. John Lannice.[1723.73][1723.73](applause) Deborah McLeve.
Thank you.
You see, Mrs. McLeve has been in cold weather.[1750.41][1750.41](laughter) In 1977, Deborah began her teaching with the Euclid City Schools as an elementary teacher. During this time, she has served grades kindergarten through 2nd, and has provided meaningful knowledge to children in several buildings, including Indian Hills, Wrenbrook, Roosevelt, and Lincoln Elementary. Deborah McLeve.[1775.33][1775.33](applause) Sandra McClave. Sandra started as a kindergarten teacher in 1985 at Thomas Jefferson Magnet School. She's had the positions, positions of a second grade teacher, and her most current position as a K-2 technology coach. Sandra McClave. Margot Smolik. Mrs. Smolik began her teaching as a third grade teacher at Upson Elementary. She's also served as a fourth grade teacher in the district at both Upson and Thomas Jefferson Elementary Schools, and prior to, prior to, prior to her current position, in her current position as a literary coach. Margot Smolik. Because this is so important, I just want to make sure I didn't miss anyone that didn't call us to tell us that they were coming, or any other retiring teachers. I just don't want to miss anybody, I don't want to get beat over the head with that. I just want to just say a couple things. First of all, I want everyone to know that hopefully they aren't leaving because I came, so I just, I have appreciated working with all of you. I appreciate what you've done for our children, I appreciate what you've done for this district. We would never have been able to make the strides that we've made without all of the hard work that you've all made. I've been here a year, and I've gotten to know many of you, and I just appreciate what you've done for this school district. So thank you for all of what you've done on behalf of the children of Euclid City Schools.
Well, you've been around as long as I have, you've worked with almost all of you. We have my kids in your classes, and I know other board members feel the same way, so we appreciate everything you've done. And we want to give you this opportunity, if you'd like to say something about your experience in Euclid, or what you're planning on doing now that you're out of here. Somebody already has been on vacation. Does anyone want to say anything? Margot?
First of all, I want to thank the Euclid School District for giving me the opportunity to work with such a wonderful group of teachers and children, and I appreciate all of the fairness that the board has shown us, and I plan to be back as a tutor next year, so I don't want to leave.
That's okay. Anyone else want to say something?
You know, I do have to say something. I want to thank this board, I want to thank the superintendent and the president, because I have her daughter, and it's a new chapter, and hopefully I'll come back too as a tutor. But the best thing of it all is that I'm an alumni of Euclid, and so many of the teachers that taught me, taught me well, as well as my brother, and I thank you for this night.
I've taught in Euclid for 28 years, and it has been a wonderful, wonderful career. I can't think of a better place to have been. I've had great principals, I had Hank Steinmetz, Margie Pusok, I don't even know if I can name them all, I've got so many, Sally Boyton, we've lost two of those people already, unfortunately, much too young, Bob Smolinski, Dr. Selico, Kathy Kevany, Mary Thomas, Ken Felido, and now Chris Bukoros at Chardon Hills, and they've all been wonderful administrators and wonderfully supportive and helpful, and it's just, it's been a fun ride. And when people ask me what I'm going to do, I say whatever I feel like.
I'd like to say thank you not only to all the people that are on the board, but the staff that I've worked with and the administrators, but more than that, the parents, because when you teach, you're not a success unless you're working with the parents and finding them so reliable to help their children. And so I want to thank the parents, as well as all the people that are in this room, and that I've been in contact with in my 29 years of teaching.
I have to tell a tale on Laura, and that is when my son had her at Central, and it was within the first week of school, he's my oldest, and I get a phone call. Hi, Mrs. Avestine, and I have your son Adam in my class for English, and she's talking away and talking away, and the whole time she's talking, I'm waiting for the other shoe to fall, for her to tell me what she did wrong, and there was nothing wrong, it was all good news, it was a pleasant way to start the year with her, and it's, she's done that every year, I know, and that was, it was so welcome, but it was, here I was a school board member, and I'm waiting for the shoe to fall, says what my kid did wrong, and it was really a pleasure to have you. It was a pleasure having you there. Anybody else that I want to cut you off?
I just, there's one I'm going to force to say something.
Uh-oh.
Mrs. McClave? I know you have it in you, and I know you want to, so I'm going to, I'm going to ask one last, do one last thing for the superintendent, I need you to talk to us about your, thank you very much.
Well, I've welcomed our superintendent to Euclid every month, as I think, my husband can tell me, is it 14 superintendents, seven superintendents, 14 principals I've worked for. 35 years in Euclid. Sandy and I both married Euclid graduates, and it's been 35 great years. The rapport we build with parents, kids, we've seen children starting in kindergarten when we had them, come back, send their kids to us, and they send them with trust, and we go there, and it's just great to see everybody grow as we have grown, and given them opportunity from the board and all of my superintendents and principals, and so thank you.
I just want to just say before, let them all off the hook here, that, you know, we took a lot of time to do this, there's a lot that these individuals have given to this district, and so out of respect for them, we just deserve to give them this time, because they've meant a lot to what's going on in this district. A lot of the successes are a result of what they've been able to do, and I just want to make sure each one of you know that we're very, very proud of you. I was, I'm just happy to have had the experience to work with you. I wish you the best, and please, you can always come back and visit. So thank you for all of what you've done for Euclid City Schools. And last, but not least, I just want to, if there are family members that represent these individuals, would you please stand, so we can recognize you also? You know it's important to recognize you all, because they wouldn't have been able to do what they did unless they had that support, so thank you for all of that. Thank you for what you do.
Mr. Bell, can I just make one quick comment? Madam Chair, can I just make one quick comment?
Yes.
Okay, I will. Yes, just one quick comment, if I might. I've had the pleasure of being a parent of Mrs. Deborah McClave, but I just wanted to recognize her, because I think that her support and generosity has gone beyond the classroom. Just one second. She's a swim mom, and when our girls' high school swim team had two qualifiers at the state level, they were going to the state tournament without shirts or matching sweatsuits. And Mrs., Mr. and Mrs. McClave donated the money to purchase the sweatsuits with their names, the Euclid swim team, and the years that they qualified, and they've supported them every year. And so I just wanted to say thank you from a mother who appreciates what you did, so that our girls went to the state tournament looking professional, representing the school in a magnificent form, and they made it to the podium, and made us proud, and looked really, looked really good up there, so thank you so much for that, too.
Thank you. We also have, as a part of that resolution, we also are recognizing classified staff. And so Madam Chair, members of the board, whereas the Euclid Board of Education has accepted the resignations for retirement from 12 classified staff members during the 2010, 11 school year, and whereas the Board of Education wishes to recognize these individuals and express appreciation to them for their years of loyal service to Euclid City Schools, now therefore let it be resolved that the Euclid Board of Education extends best wishes to these individuals, and it should be the 2012 school year. And we'd like to extend the best wishes, Madam Chair, members of the board, I would recommend this for both.
Okay, so motion, I will, change the solution.
Yep, with the, yeah, with the change made to 2012, 2013, so moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mrs. Lysy. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Soudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Two of the individuals are here this evening, so I want to bring them up. The first one is Ethel Barbish. Ethel began her teaching career, her career, her career with Euclid City Schools on September 10th, 1973, as a Euclid High School, as a paraprofessional. In August 2007, her position changed to security monitor, where she remained at the high school. She's retired, she retired, Ethel retired as of May 3rd, 2013. Ethel Barbish. The second person is Nikki Segria. There's Miss Elena here, but I know we call her Nikki, so. Nikki was hired on September 1st, 1979, in various kitchen positions at Forest Park. In August 1983, she transferred to a, to a health aid position at Euclid High School. Nikki is retiring as of June 14th, 2013. And again, we'd like to give you an opportunity to, any expressions that you may have.
Forty years, I wish I could start over. It was a really good ride, I enjoyed the people I worked with, they were very professional, and the students are great, they have gone on, I've seen many of them go on to big things, and that's what I wish for all the future students, big things. Thank you. I'm happy to say, after Friday, no more alarm clock.
Also, we'd like to have the families to stand that represent these individuals. And also just like to show the fact that you, it takes an entire support team to educate our children, and so when you look at it, we have our teachers, but as I've said, since I've come into the district, everyone here is an educator, and so we're looking at two educators, they're just educating in a different way. So I just want you to know, we appreciate what you do, wish you the best in all of your endeavors, and thank you for what you've done for Euclid City Schools.
At this time, we're going to take a break until 8:30, because we have refreshments, as we traditionally do when we have retirees, they're right outside. Also, those of you with young ones, if you want to leave, we understand that you need to get them to bed, so you can't do that at this time as well. We resume at 8:30. Okay, we are resuming our meeting. At this time, we will have reports and recommendations to the treasurer, Mr. Basak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 13 is a resolution to approve financial data as submitted to the board, I recommend approval.
Is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Lysy, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Soudar.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item 14 is a resolution to approve transfers and advances and final appropriations. These are steps we're taking as we close out the fiscal year. We may have a couple more, a special meeting later this month, but this should be the majority of the adjustments that we have to make, and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mrs. Lysy. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Soudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item 15 is a resolution to approve or accept donation from the Robert E. Haynes Gift Fund. This is actually the second gift given to them. They normally give us this once a year, for some reason, they gave it to us twice this year, so basically, it's $500, of which 200 is to be directed to the music department, 200 the athletic department, and 100 to the big show, and I recommend approval.
Okay, is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Lysy, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? We do appreciate everything that the Haynes Gift Fund does for us, and we just sent them a letter.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Soudar.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
And item 16 is a resolution authorizing the business manager to seek proposals from architects and design services to assist the district in planning of the high school phase of the cap approval program, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Lysy, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments?
Do we want to provide an explanation?
I was going to.
Okay.
Okay. At this time, we are getting initial proposals of some ideas, this is all going to be conceptual, of things that we can do using the parts of the high school that we want to maintain that the state won't fund, such as our planetarium, our two theaters, our two gyms, our swimming pools, and so forth, and then combine, combining that with a new wing, but we're looking at a variety of educational options, and so in order to present anything to the community, we're getting someone to at least give us some conceptual drawings, so that we can present the ideas to the community, which won't happen until the fall, but that's what this program is for.
Yeah, I would just, just to kind of clarify for the benefit of the community, this is essentially the earliest beginning of the next phase of the Euclid, you know, public schools construction project, which will include the high school and perhaps the middle schools, but we're not really able to even say that conclusively, this is again, just the, this is the beginning of the, of the planning phase, and there will definitely be an opportunity for community input as we move forward, but, you know, just, this is the first step in getting that underway.
Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Soudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. This time, we'll turn to reports and recommendations to the superintendent, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Item 17 is to consider certified staff program reductions, and asking for approval. If you look at this, just to highlight it in bold, are the requests that we're asking for today.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Lysy. Any questions or comments?
I have a question slash comment. I talked to Mr. Bell about it, but the change was not made here. I thought it was supposed to be an increase of .9 position.
We went back through it, and that's.
Trying to figure it out myself.
It's right, Madam Chair, members of the board, we did have, we thought we had a discrepancy in the, in the numbers, but we went back through it, and it is accurate, as listed, so if you go back and count through it, I went through it about five or six times today, and I meant to get back to you on that, I did not.
The pluses and minuses sometimes get difficult, and then.
And what, and just so, just to update the board, we thought, and I thought, we had a addition error. Mrs. De Angelis had pointed out that we thought it was 14, and, which would then make the number, the negative number, .9, but as I went back through it, and went through it with a calculator, went through the whole thing, it was accurate.
I don't see it, so I'm just, I'm sitting here looking at it again, and it's, so afterwards someone can show me.
Yeah, well, I mean, I went back through it five or six times today, I had the same question. I can, Dr. Seliko, is there anything that we're missing? I mean, I, we went back through it to check the accuracy on the numbers.
Yes, yeah. It was related to the coaching positions, I think is what's maybe throwing people on that .6 and .4, but yeah, this is accurate.
Okay. Are you okay now?
I don't, but we'll talk about it after the meeting.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item 18 is a consideration for classified staff program reductions, and we're asking for approval.
Is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Lysy, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item is on regarding personnel, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Andrew Hope, who will take us through the personnel part of our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Item number 19 is a resolution considering certified staff for the 2012-2013 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mr. Carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item 20 is a resolution considering the classified staff for the 2012-2013 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Lysy, seconded by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mr. Carries 5-0.
Thank you. And I should have prefaced this by saying, many of my items, my resolutions are routine, so that's why we'll go through them rather quickly. Item number 21 is a resolution considering grant payments, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Lysy, seconded by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mr. Carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item 22 is a resolution considering the 2013 summer school staff appointments, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Are these positions not filled because we don't have kids taking the classes? How's our enrollment going?
Well, I believe our enrollment is coming up. Have we begun enrollment, Mr. Lysy, are you aware? For summer school?
No. 21st, 2021 and 22nd.
So they're anticipated, but again, as we know, it's based on enrollment, so we'll see.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item 23 is a resolution considering the 2013 summer employment for the classified staff, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Lysy, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item 24 is a resolution considering certified personnel for the 2013-2014 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Mrs. De Angelis, seconded by Mr. Smith.
Are there any questions or comments? This is where I will chime in.
This is where you will chime in.
Yes. I would like to introduce to you three teachers that we are looking to hire and very excited about, and just ironically, they are all three intervention specialists. And so very excited about the caliber of candidates this year, and very pleased with those that we selected. So I'd like to introduce you to three different individuals, and the first being Mr. Gary Hicks. And Gary, there he is. I'll have you come up, and I'm going to read a little bit about you, and then I'll ask you to say a few remarks, okay? Thank you. So Mr. Hicks is a first-year teacher who received his bachelor's degree from California University of Pennsylvania in Journalism. He received his teaching credentials from Notre Dame College, where he is currently enrolled in a master's of education program and is scheduled to graduate in June of 2014. Mr. Hicks completed his student teaching at Hope Academy, and prior to becoming a teacher, he worked as a paraprofessional with special needs students. So Mr. Hicks, if you'd like to say a few words?
Yes, first of all, I want to say thank you to all the board members and the president. Thank you for having me. I had my speech on my head for all the people that was here. I just want to say thank you for everyone's attendance here today. I just want to say I'm just humbled by this opportunity that I'm given. I don't take this for granted. I know it's a big responsibility, but I'm built for it, and I'm ready for it. I have a lot of confidence that I will be able to do an excellent job for this school district, as well as this community. And I have a clear idea of what it, what's the expectation and what's expected of me to be a part of a community that has longevity, considered family-based, and so I'm, I'm very excited. I especially want to give a thank you to the principal, Dr. Seliko here, and also I want to give a special, special thank you to my beautiful wife, what I used to call my bride. Without her, I wouldn't have made it this far. So I just want to thank her, and I just want to thank you, once again, for giving me this great opportunity.
Can you have your family just stand, your beautiful bride and the family back?
And these cute little kids, all of them.
I just want to see what's making all that noise back there.
That's LJ. Got to know him. All right. Our second teacher candidate this evening is Acacia Scott. And Acacia, and I should have said, I'm sorry, Gary is an intervention specialist at, with moderate at Euclid High School. And Acacia Scott is an intervention specialist for Forest Park, that we are looking to bring her on for. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about Ms. Scott. Scott, would you like to come forward? She was looking forward to this moment, so. Okay, so Ms. Scott is a first-year teacher who received her bachelor's degree from Cleveland State University in moderate intense education of special needs students. Ms. Scott completed her student teaching assignments at Warrensville Heights High School and the Cleveland Municipal School District. In 2012, Ms. Scott received the Outstanding Student Teacher Award. So we're very proud, and we're happy to have her here, and it's, it's not, not an easy task to find teachers going into moderate and intense in special education, because they're dealing with kids with severe needs, and, and I know that you have a passion for that, and I admire that, and I'm glad to have you. So if you'd like to say a few words?
First, I want to say thank you. I'm looking forward to this opportunity, so I do want to thank everybody for allowing me this opportunity. I'm excited about my new home district. This is something that I've been striving for, for quite some time. I did tour the high school last week, actually, and I met a few of the staff members, and even just being here tonight, it just seems as if, you know, this is somewhere that I can call home for quite some time, so I'm looking forward to being here. So again, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to start my teaching career here. Hopefully, I can finish it here, so I'm excited about that. And I do, excuse me, I'm sick, so. But I do have a passion for moderate to severe disabilities, primarily emotional disorder, so I'm really excited to be able to have this opportunity to do something that you love. It's just something that is amazing, so, thank you.
And do your family here.
Remember, you have a spot next to him.
That's my husband, but he's not with me, because he doesn't want to stand, so no.
He was hoping that crowd would stay, so he would be.
That's why, I really didn't try to say anything, but yes, that's my husband, and he's been my backbone, so.
So backbone has to stand.
Yeah, we got to stand.
You always have to be careful when they say it's my husband, but.